Just say your name.
Okay.
All right, we will call tonight's meeting to order for August 20, 2019. And as we start out every meeting, we read the mission statement. Norfolk Public Schools offers a safe, joyful, and challenging learning environment that meets the needs of our diverse students through school, family, and community partnerships. Providing education inspires lifelong learners and cultivates caring and productive citizens of our ever-changing world. Roll call?
Jennifer Nguyen.
Midora Champagne.
Jeff Curry.
Paul Cochran.
Thomas Doyle.
Ingrid Allardy.
All right. Um, public comment? I'll make sure, okay?
Just fans.
Just fans. Got a lot of school committee fans. All right, bear with me. Pop the heads, we have a gift fund. All right, so we have da-da-da-da-da-da. A huge gift fund tonight. Actually, that would be better, that version, but that works out for me. So, um, we have a total of $9,026.06 that is before us. And to give a quick breakdown on that, the Norfolk PTO provided five different ones for HOD, and I apologize if I missed them on one. It includes such things as $250 for school play, Club Glow $400, playground supplies $500, Field Day $164, literacy $500. In addition, for HOD, there's several others. NCL Charity Fund $375 for tambono drums. I won't pretend to know what that is, so we're gonna move on. Stem cart for kindergarten. And additionally, $1,600 for bookcase for the classrooms. And then finally, American Heart Association did a $300 donation for sports net. I don't know what that is. I don't know if you wanna... Is that something in particular, or just says B. Goodwin Sports Net?
Bruce Goodwin's the physical education teacher. Is it a net replacement? I'm not sure. Yes, I'd have to check with...
Okay, so I couldn't... I don't know if net was an acronym?
It's already hired out here and you...
Oh, um, NCL awarded a grant to Bruce Goodwin for a sports net. Is that a replacement net, or we're not sure?
No, it was American Heart Association.
Oh.
Yeah, but it says the purpose is for a sports net, and so I wasn't sure if it's an acronym or something. I just wanna give proper credit. Okay. Well, they were very nice, American Heart Association.
Yeah.
Good guess, we'll go with that one. And then additionally, Norfolk PTO provided for Freeman Kennedy in this instance, $500 for literacy, $229.92 for Field Day, $250 for playground supplies, going back to NCL. Charitable Fund $2,000 for the AIMM program. And mobile maker carts, that's $1,200. And then finally, $357 for the music program. So those in total, assuming I didn't miss one, $9,026.06. Do we have a donate... Or, excuse me, do we have a motion to accept those?
Make a motion to accept the gifts as stated.
Second on that?
Second.
Any further discussion?
No.
Thank you very much to all the various people, PTO, NCL Charity Fund, American Heart Association. I think I got everyone, so thank you very much. That is very much appreciated. All those in favor?
Aye.
Okay. Uh, next thing goes to me for the HOD roof replacement update. That's actually where we just came from. So this is breaking news out of the press as far as the roof replacement update. Short version is, everything is going well. Minor hiccups here or there is to be expected with any project, but bottom line is under budget and on time. As promised, that was going to be the case, and that will be the case. So, uh, thank you to everyone, in particular Matt and all his team, for managing what is a difficult and challenging project. And for us to be able to sit here and be able to say it's under budget, on time, is a nice thing to be able to say. And then pass that on to the larger community who nicely supported the project when time came, and that there were some understandable questions about that, so the fact we're in the position is very comforting to see. So, I don't know if anyone else has any additional comments?
I would just like to say, acknowledge the additional time and energy that some of the committee members made. Midora Light Champagne, Thomas Doyle, and Ingrid Allardy, and am I forgetting anyone else who... And Matt, who worked on the subcommittee to, I guess, work between the Board of Selectmen and the company, and they put in a lot of hours, including the day before 4th of July. So I just wanna say, thank you very much for micromanaging this. Thank you.
[laughing]
I vote you go on the next Capitol.
Uh, thank you? All right, so that is it for me. We'll move along to Ingrid, who has all kinds of things this evening, so take it away.
With the committee's permission, I'd like to suggest that we reorganize the order. We have annually, the H. Olive Day School and the Freeman Kennedy School have school councils that are comprised of staff members, community members, parent representatives, and the school council serves as an advisory board to the principal. And one of their responsibilities is to review school data and to develop a school improvement plan. So they're all here tonight to present their proposed school improvement plan goals. They've all written two years' improvement plans. Sometimes we write a three-year plan, but the district will be revising and updating our long-term strategic plan in two years. And we work hard to make sure that those two documents align and that we have synergy around our areas of focus. So they've written two-year plans that they're here to present, and because it's late and they're opening school and busy, I'd like to let them go first, and then we can go on to the regular year business, if that's okay.
Perfect.
All right.
Good plan.
So, um, we'll start with H. Olive Day, if that's okay? So Linda Balfour is here to present the H. Olive Day School Improvement Plan. You should have a copy in the packet that was sent to you, and she'll walk us through their goals.
Yeah?
Oh, I'm sorry.
That's okay.
Good evening, and we're happy to be here to present our school improvement plan this evening. But first of all, I would like to again say thank you to everyone involved with the roof replacement. Thank you for your support. Thank you to the Selectmen. Thank you to our school council and people for their support of pushing for the design. Did you like the design?
Beautiful.
Doesn't it look nice?
Very good.
Really sharp.
So I'm so happy that everyone supported that, and we got that. It wouldn't be HOD without that design, so thank you very much. So, we are here, as you know, as Dr. Allardy just said, our school improvement plan is created by the school council, but we have input from a variety of different sources. But we are fortunate to have many of our school council members here this evening, so I'd just like to introduce them first. We have Lindsay Ampere-Daly here, who is one of our parent representatives. We have Shannon Mennesses, who is also here, and Kathleen Wright. And then we have Michelle St. Laurent, who was not able to be here today because of travel plans. Our teacher representative is Beth O'Connor. And our second teacher representative, Kate Osella, was not able to be here this evening either. And then we have our community member, who is Betty Berry, who is a former teacher at HOD and a lifelong resident of Norfolk, and she's had to continue to serve as our community member. And then, of course, you all know Mrs. Balfour, we knew that, remember? So just to give you a little bit of background, when we began creating the plan, we took several things into consideration. We took a look at the progress made on our last plan. We also looked at the goals and objectives that are listed on our current district's strategic plan. And then we looked at the results of our last parent survey, which was in 2018, the results of our staff survey, which was more recent, and we also had the input from our school council members as well. So our last plan included a communication goal, and action steps on that had included the development of the school website and the scheduling of an HOD town meeting. The website was put a little bit on hold because in the midst of that, the technology team had suggested that we look for a different format and venue for that. So we're in the process of transition, so we will continue on that as we work on our communication goal this coming year. We did have two very successful town meetings in 2017 and 2018. This past year, we put it off this past spring, but we're going to do one again this coming school year. But that gave... Provided parents a venue and a format for coming and listening to some information that we presented, like we presented like the school improvement plan, we presented like the results of the parent and staff surveys. We updated them on curriculum and things like that, and then they had the opportunity as well to ask any questions. And they could submit questions ahead of time, too, for us to consider to present information on. So we felt that that was very successful and worth doing again next year. We also shared with them the strategic plan at one of those town meetings as well. So then, another goal in our past plan was to develop and promote educator excellence characterized by high-quality instruction, implementation of best practices, and professional collaboration. And we really started to rely heavily on our in-house experts, because we have so many different people that have expertise in so many different areas, and they also know the children, they know the staff, they know the curriculum, so it really makes sense to tap their expertise. So we started out with what we called the HOD Academy, and we had several different people present. Beth O'Connor is our reading specialist, was one of those people, our math specialist, our occupational therapist, Anita, and then Anita and I facilitated some things like TED Talk Tuesdays and things like that. We did that for a few years, and now we've done so much district-wide with our PD, with our Norfolk PD and our website, that it's all sort of melded into one. So we still do occasionally offer those things, but we offer a lot more of that to both schools through Norfolk PD. We had a curriculum goal that focused on science and the implementation of new units of the FOST Science Program. You know, that was a few years ago, and that supported science instruction in labs that met the new... The then-new NGSS science standards that were introduced. That was back in 2014, the new standards were introduced, and that goal was successfully met. We continue, of course, to work on science, and you know, Vicky Saldana is the chairperson, or the, I should say, the curriculum director for the science area, and so that she continues to facilitate the curriculum teams, which continue to look at sciences. We all know those standards are never-ending, they just continue to evolve. So we've updated things since then. Another goal was to support teachers so they could successfully integrate technology into all curriculum areas in order to enhance student achievement in content areas and increase student skills and fluency using technology. And we have been very, very fortunate to have had funding to constantly update all of our technology. We just updated smart boards, which was amazing, that we were able to do that. We've added Chromebooks over the years, and our technology team has provided a great deal of professional development for us. Again, our in-house people, including a full professional development days, where we've had people from in-house, and I think we also had a few people from Rentham and Plainfield presenting those days, so it's been a really collaborative effort. So I think that we feel that we are really up to date in technology, and we feel that we have a great deal of in-house support ongoing. We can tap into any of their expertise and their, you know, those tech brains that not all of us have, and so they really do a great job supporting us. And another goal was focused, and now this again is the past plan, on the exploration of bringing back a world language curriculum. As we know, we unfortunately had to cut back years ago, and that was one of the programs that was cut back, when we had really some severe budget cuts. And we did begin to explore that during the time of this plan, but then it was decided that it wasn't... The timing wasn't right, because we were looking at children that would be going through here but not continuing it at the middle school level. So we thought that the timing wasn't right, but it does continue to be an area of interest for people. Parents expressed that on the parent survey. So over the past few years, we also offered parents and staff members the opportunity to complete a survey, so that we could get their thoughts on different topics, and it also provided a forum for them to make comments on any of the areas, including curriculum, communication, technology, school safety, school climate, a wide variety of things. So with all that, that was then, this is now, right going forward. So we have our school improvement plan for this year, and again, that's all the information that we use to collect, you know, the background so that we could formulate our goals. And I know that you all have had a chance to look at the copy of it. So our first goal was to create social and learning opportunities for HOD families that support social, emotional wellness for students and families. So that's an area that goes along very nicely with our SEL, you know, Social Emotional Learning Initiative, and it also goes along very nicely with some professional development that we just participated in, which was really great. We had our whole administrative team from Norfolk, plus the teams from Rentham, Plainville, and King Philip. And it was so nice to get together and have... The topic was digging deep for diversity. And we had two days in the spring, right after school got out, and two days, just the past two days, Monday and Tuesday. And it was really... It was wonderful training, not only in diversity, but just in team building and, you know, establishing a positive culture both on your administrative teams and in the school, creating a sense of belonging and including everyone from all different areas of life. So it's... I think it's training that won't be used just for diversity, per se, but for all of our culture building, so it was great. So thank you to Dr. Allardy, because I know she facilitated that for the whole district. Let's see. So we decided that, you know, we'll have at least two get-togethers, device-free get-togethers, which our parents were very happy about, right? They were really promoting that. We want to have at least two events. We are hoping we might be able to have one in the fall, but if not, then we'll have it later on in the school... In the school year. And we also wanna plan a get-together for our families of our English language learners, because we feel that sometimes, well, like with any group, sometimes they just don't see each other much, and they have a lot of common things to discuss and to... Just to be familiar with other people in the community that have the same things that they have in their families, like, you know, dealing with two different languages, cultural differences, et cetera. So we wanted to have a get-together for them, and then talk about how we can share all cultures in our school throughout the year. If anyone wants to add anything that I missed, you can just go ahead.
I just wanted to jump on the topic. Our demographics have been changing, and I know we've talked about it as a committee, but back in 2012, we didn't have any students that were identified as ELL, and we're upwards of 40, 45 now. So it is a very rapidly growing population. So I think it's great that you're going to reach out to try to address some of the unique needs that that group has.
And then we also wanted to identify an area or two that parents may be interested in having a workshop on, in addition to like our math, or literacy, or science, or things like that. Maybe another area, we... Two years... Well, last year, actually, we did... Not this last school year, the school year before, we did a parent workshop series dealing with like anxiety and some different issues that people had identified, and we want to do that again this year. Okay. Next, we wanna go... We try to be as green as possible, but we wanna go a little brighter green. We want to add some more features to our school. So we have... We're forming a green team, which we started to form last year, but we didn't get too far because it was just such a busy spring that we didn't have too many meetings. But we want to have members from, you know, the teaching staff, the support staff, custodial staff, if they're able or interested in it, and also from parents to talk about how we can promote greener practices at school. We tried to do a lot of recycling and things like that, but we added marker recycling this past year, which was very successful. And so we just wanna keep, you know, adding little things like that, or big things, if big things come up that we can do. We also have tapped into... The state has some resources for things like composting bins and recycling bins and things, so we're tapping into that as well. As part of that, we would like to communicate with our families, too. So if we're teaching children about recycling and reusing, we feel that we would like to include families in that effort, too, in a town-wide effort. That's a time we always talk about, Ms. H. Olive Day, who was, we always say, was the most unbelievable recycler back in the day, before it was even, you know, fashionable. She saved everything, she reused everything. I mean, teachers can remember her encouraging us to use crayons until they were that big, until the kids could hardly hold them, and making sure we used both sides of the paper and everything. So we had a good role model for recycling. Another goal is to investigate options. Again, this is the world language coming back. Investigate options for reincorporating world language into the Norfolk Public Schools curriculum, and to establish communication with the King Philip School District in regard to their plans in regard to establishing world language curriculum. Because we, again, we figured it doesn't make sense if our program here would be a dead end. But we would like to find out what their plans are, and even if they had plans to say, well, in four or five years, we'll do it, then we could sort of start, and, you know, with our kids, because by the time they were old enough, then they would have it established there, too.
Linda, I did ask, because we were just together with them, and they do have, there's no foreign language in seventh grade, but in eighth grade, kids have an option of a world language, either French or Spanish. So that's what they have now, I did ask.
Yeah, I think it's just for like a 12-week block or something, yeah. Yeah, but, yeah, so it's something. Yeah. But we all know from the research that we did before that that kind of window for kids to really learn a second language and learn it so that they can speak like a native speaker is like really birthed to about 11 or so, and then that window starts to close. So even if we were just to introduce it, then at least they would get the ear for it, you know, and to get the tongue movement that they need for the different sounds, et cetera. So... Let's see. Language.
I concur.
Communication with our little school, we talked about that. We would like to expand our Teachers Need Teachers program to include all teaching staff. Right now, we have a program that we've developed at HOD where teachers are able to have a couple of free periods where their children go for an extra period of Phys Ed, and this year maybe Phys Ed or Art. And while they're there, the teachers get to visit another classroom. So they can identify like an area that, you know, maybe someone does a really great math workshop program, and they'd like to visit that. Sometimes we have teachers that would like to visit the year before, like say like, hey, I'd like to see what the second... You know, the first graders are like at the... In May, to see what... Where they're ending so that we can start up, you know, in second grade in the fall. So we've had all kinds of interesting visits by teachers. What they do is they visit, they just do a little write-up for Anita and me, which is just like basically who they visited, the lesson that they saw taught, or the program, or whatever was going on at that time, and what their takeaway was from it, what they came away, you know, having learned, and how they may be able to use that in their classroom. So we found that to be very, very beneficial for our classroom teachers, but so far, we've not been able to offer that to our special needs teachers or our specialists, like I use at Phys Ed, just because of the logistics. So that's our priority this year, is to work that out so that those people will have the opportunity to visit as well. And let's see. Oh, and our last one was to standardize and centralize communication to parents, both school-related events, not including teacher-parent communication. In other words, individual teacher-parent communication. So with this, we know that that's the focus of the strategic plan, and we have a subcommittee that's worked... That's going to be beginning work on that. And so the school council would like to work in conjunction with them and listen to their ideas and recommendations, and come up with ideas of how we could best put that into effect at HOD, so that we have it a little bit more standardized in terms of the amount of communication, the type of communication. We've surveyed parents in the past about what they would prefer, like, did you prefer email, you know, or connected, like a blast, or email to your individual, you know, individual boxes from the teachers, like the newsletters and things? And it's varied. So we've tried a variety of different things, and sometimes we hear, we get way too much. You know, our email boxes are full, and sometimes you get, we don't get enough, we'd like more. So we're trying to balance, I think through the communication committee, we're trying to balance, like, what's the good balance? What's the good blend of those things? So...
Would that include information from like NCL and all of our other partners that send home the information?
Communication Subcommittee is one of the action steps under our strategic planning goal, and we're gonna be looking at all communication.
All communication from whoever, not just...
How communication flows out of the district, how we get information back in from parents, what standard expectations we have for staff in terms of communication, what tools we're gonna use. So we're looking at all of it.
And are we still considering Facebook and Twitter, social media?
The committee's gonna look at that, and I think I mentioned to the committee in the fall that there is some new legal precedent around...
Yes.
...public records and archiving Facebook posts, so we have to look at all of that to develop an action plan and recommendation.
Okay. Thank you.
Okay. So those are basically our goals.
Great.
Anyone have any questions, or?
Thank you.
Okay.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. Anyone have anything to add that I missed? No?
No, Mrs. Balfour. [applause] Next, we have Lisa Alden-Hickey and Victoria Saldana to present the Freeman Kennedy Plan, and then at the end, the committee actually has to vote to accept those two plans.
First, I wanted to take the opportunity just to thank our members of our school improvement, actually, committee, who actually worked diligently on this plan with us. I'd like to thank Vicky Salagner, who's our assistant principal and curriculum director for math and science. We have members that actually could not attend this evening, but I would like to recognize them. So Lori Cochran, a fifth-grade teacher, was a teacher representative. We also had Samantha Moore, a fifth-grade teacher representative, Amy Evans, who's a parent representative, and we also had Kathy Stare, our community representative. So like Mrs. Balfour did, I'm just gonna highlight, actually, you know what, our former school improvement plan, some of the highlights of that plan, and then actually just highlight some of the areas of our new plan. Some of the highlights of our old plan under the curriculum, actually, which was from 2014 to 2016, actually, one of the big things actually underneath that area was, is actually, we had a huge focus at Freeman Kennedy School on Bloom's taxonomy, and doing a big dive into Bloom's taxonomy to actually get our teachers to actually ask higher-level questioning and thinking. So we did a lot of that work, actually, within our, actually, staff meetings, and we created lots of different types of visuals, actually, for teachers that actually were posted in classrooms to get them to actually think of those higher-level questioning. So that was a highlight of ours that we actually did. Another area under the curriculum is that it's hard to think that, you know, what... It was a big learning curve in regards to actually Google, the Google platform. It's hard to think that actually that is like way past us at this point in time, but I feel that at this point in time, our teachers have actually taken that platform and actually run with it. So it's really nice to have those opportunities to use technology and to, I think, teach children, you know, what the... All the multiple uses for that. Like Mrs. Balfour mentioned, that was the NGSS science standards, and we were actually adopting the inquiry model in regards to that, and actually providing opportunities for teachers to actually unpack, you know what? Like Mrs. Balfour mentioned, that was the NGSS science standards, and we were actually adopting the inquiry model in regards to that, and actually providing opportunities for teachers to actually unpack, you know what, some of the science standards. So that was another focus. Underneath PD during that timeframe is, we really focused on actually a course that we offered our teachers, actually, I would say, over the course of like three or four years, is unleashing the power of collaborative inquiry. And we spent a really long time with teachers, actually, in data meetings, and what it means to actually unpack different types of data. And I would say that probably 80% of our staff in both buildings are actually trained in that model of actually how to unpack data and the different types of data that we're able to actually unpack. I think one of the things that actually has been a nice segue to that is that now our teachers are actually leading and guiding their own meetings, actually, with actually administrators popping into those meetings, and the curriculum, actually, specialists are actually help leading those meetings. So I think that's a huge, actually, win-win for teachers of being able to actually, you know, run their meetings and actually unpack the data that's meaningful to them on a day-to-day basis.
Lisa, I'm sorry, could you explain to me, what does it mean to unpack data? I'm not being literal, but like, could you give an example?
Example of unpacking data. So I'll use actually an example of actually GoMath data, so you know what?
I know, GoMath, yeah.
So GoMath data, actually, teachers use basically, you know, their regular chapter test, and then they have basically a mid-year, you know what, benchmark, I would say, and that benchmark is, is used to actually drive, you know, what, where kids are. So the teachers would take the mid-year benchmark and actually begin to look at all the standards that they've actually taught to this point in time. And, you know, what, where our students are, the standards that we've taught up to this point. And then, you know what, when they're looking at all those different types of things, they're looking at, you know, the questioning, they're looking at the types of questions students are answered, and digging deeper into regards to like how kids are doing on those, and then going back, you know, so then that's our opportunity to say, okay, you know what, this group of kids have it, this group of kids don't have it, or else, you know what, why do these kids have it, and talking to colleagues of, you know, how did you teach it? Did you teach it a different way than I taught it, you know? Or did you present it in a different way? So in that multiple modalities.
I think that's great, because I know for a fact that my daughter's teacher and her team, we had a big discussion about the new math program and whatever, and she's like, well, during our team discussion, we noticed that most of the kids didn't understand this type of questioning, that sort of thing, so I think that's great. Do you give the teachers time to do that? Is it built into the schedule? Because I think that's so important.
Yes, we do actually give them time. So basically, they have actually, once a month, so we have a rotating basis.
That's great.
During that time, in both buildings, basically, we have our AIM program, where actually the students have the opportunity in this building to make choices in regards, and then the teachers have actually a two-hour timeframe, once a month, to do that.
And you're going to continue that, right? Even though you meant it?
We are continuing.
Okay, sorry. I'll stop talking.
So it is continued, yes. Yeah. And that's been, you know, like, Dr. Lardney, I've had some conversations about that. That's been like a shift and change, I think, you know, in regards to leadership, of being able to actually unleash that, so that teachers actually have that opportunities to drive that.
No, it works.
Yes. So. The other big thing that the curriculum leaders worked really hard on, and actually was, I think, super helpful for our teachers, is what a big overarching was assessment and creating basically an assessment plan with clear proficiency box, benchmarks, kindergarten through grade six. So that was a huge one that we did, I feel like, a while ago, too, but actually, teachers having benchmarks for students on where they should be at certain times, for example, a DRA, or now we're using VAS, you know, what should that look like and where should they be in their developmental reading progress? So we've actually done really good, and I think that we revised that over time with, you know, our new curriculum people too, as well. So that's kind of an overview of like, you know, the highlights of where we were, and tonight, I'm going to kind of let you know, basically, my new plan. So the biggest thing is, is that I think that our school plan aligns with the Norfolk Public Schools District Strategic Plan, and we're always looking at it to actually, you know, I think, you know, go down the same path, but actually dig a little bit deeper into some of the things that we're doing in the school. So the four overarching strategic goals, basically, that fall into the same category is, the strategic plan was social-emotional learning, curriculum, professional development, and communication. One of our big goals was actually, and it was a district goal as well, was looking at our social-emotional learning. And actually, this past year, we had a committee that was formed of teachers, administrators, actually, from both buildings, and just looking at, you know, what are we currently doing for social-emotional learning? What are the curriculum materials that we're using for social-emotional learning, and how are we doing with those? And some of the things that we actually did to actually collect data on that information was, is that we here did a parent survey on school culture and climate. There was one that went out district-wide, actually, from the committee as well, on that information. And some of the things specifically related to Freeman Kennedy was, is that we didn't have a, actually, curriculum materials that we're using through grade six. The Open Circle only went, you know, what, basically kindergarten through grade five. And grade six is a part of our whole school community, and we felt it was really important that we continued teaching, you know, what, certain skills that are the components, I think, in the foundation of social-emotional learning. So that being said, there was a lot that went on behind the scenes, looking at different types of, you know, materials that would support teaching the critical components of social-emotional learning. And one of the things I think is really important to know is, is that basically, that the social-emotional learning components are self-awareness, self-management, social awareness, building relationships, problem-solving skills, and responsible decision-making. And because of that, is that one of the things I think that we try to teach, you know, all of our students is, is these are skills that are life skills, that are going to take you through life. And, you know what, it's not that we want to teach these skills in isolation, we really want them embedded on a daily basis, and that, you know what, whether they go on to a career, or they go on to a college, these skills are going to be the skills that they need every single day. That being said, we actually will be, we have adopted Second Step here at Freeman Kennedy School that will be rolling out this year, and we're really excited to be able to actually take, you know, the components of what we've already had from Open Circle and kind of, you know, meld them together in regards to Second Step. So that's one of our big goals that we'll be working on for the upcoming school year. Another area of focus underneath the curriculum area that we've been focusing on, actually, over the last couple of years, is the math workshop model. So one of the things that we have, you know, done, I think, for our teachers, is very similar to, you know, mirroring what the writing workshop model is, is we've provided some strong professional development, basically, for our teachers, and we've offered a course here for the last two summers. This year, Vicky actually set up opportunities for our teachers to actually go visit other schools. We visited Foxborough Middle School, and we visited an elementary school, so that teachers can see, you know, basically, what the vision is of a math workshop model and how that works. We've also had teachers observing teachers as well, and learning from each other. We did a, actually, school-wide book read this past year by Dr. Nikki Newton, Math Workshop in Action. And our PD has been ongoing for the teachers. So that's something that's a huge focus for us, that we continue to focus on this year among all of our teachers. Another big area that actually was really, I would say, led strongly by Anita Mecklenburg, was our writers' workshops. So that was a huge focus here in the district, and last year, Anita and I worked really closely together with some outside consultants from TLA. One of the things that I think was really powerful about that is, is that we did basically what was called a learning walk for an entire school day, where we were able to actually have, you know, what, classroom teachers, administrators, and teachers, basically, from the other building actually go and walk through the entire school during writing, you know what, and really identify, basically, you know, what are we doing really well in writing, and what are our opportunities for growth? And based on the opportunities for growth, we're able to develop a professional development plan that was actually cohesive and meaningful to actually each grade level. But some of the things that really came out of that was, is that we use Lucy Colkins. Lucy Colkins is a very wordy, she likes to write, curriculum. And with that, you know, when you're actually looking at your lesson objective, and you're looking at the opportunity to, how am I going to put this lesson objective in my own words? How am I going to take that so that kids can understand it in my own words? Was one of the areas we really needed to tighten up. And how do you do that, you know, with teachers? So creating really templates, you know, for them to write, basically, a quick lesson plan, so that they're able to implement that. And there was a huge emphasis on, you know, you can't just state the learning objective or the teaching point once. That learning objective has to be actually taught consistently throughout that lesson, and then wrapping it up and revisiting it. And another area that we are focusing on is conferencing with students. So student writing, you know, is probably one of the hardest areas to actually, for a teacher to actually take and spend quality time with, going over writing. And one of the things that, you know, I think that we're reflective about, and teachers are too, is that it's easy to take a piece of paper and actually mark up that paper, you know, nuts to bolts, and hand it back to the kid, or the child, I should say. And, you know, what do they learn from that? You know what, what do they learn? You know, so really having conversations, you know, with a student about their writing to be able to say, so you know what, read that back out loud to me. What do you notice? What do you hear about this piece? Would you change anything about that? Why would you change anything about that? So that's another focus area, basically, for TLA, in that we're continuing, basically, our partnership with them, and I think what's been nice is that has been actually grade level specific. So some of the things, you know, in regards to what teachers have to teach in those content areas, we're able to talk about that content, too. So that's another big area. Social studies is something that, you know, is upcoming, that some of the standards actually have changed, and that there's a big emphasis on the standards that's going to be basically focusing on civics and an inquiry model, which is completely different than actually teachers are actually teaching right now. And that's something that Anita and I will be doing together, and we're going to go slow with the teachers in regards to actually unpacking that information. And then in science, they're continuing to work horizontally and vertically to actually align the 2016 standards, you know, with the technology and engineering frameworks. So those are kind of like my highlights and bullets. There's a lot more details in the plan specifically, you know, in regards to what we're doing, but does anybody have any questions?
I do. Okay. Lucy Colkins, I'm just curious, does the program incorporate any on-demand writing?
Yes.
Got it, yes. No.
It's just.
Anita said that the public, sorry.
It's just because I work in a middle school, and I see what happens when it comes to that time. Writing is such a give-and-take, and then when you have to pull back and say, nope, sorry, here's your paper, here's your thing, the kids are like, what?
Yes. No, they do do an on-demand, we understand at this level especially, that there needs to be voice and choice, and so we really try to give kids choice about what they're writing, so that they grow a voice and think of themselves and think as authors. Teachers do an on-demand prompt at least once per unit, where sometimes they'll do it for a pre-test and a post-test, sometimes just the post-test, depending on where we're at. And then as a district, we have on-demand prompts that we do also at the beginning of the year and the end of the year, so that we can monitor the growth of our students as a big project. At some point, I'll be coming back with my baseline and benchmark report, and I'll tell you our data on that. But they do have experience with on-demand prompts.
Can you just define on-demand prompts and ensure everybody?
So if you're writing, if we're writing about something, I might be writing an opinion piece about why I think every family should have a dog, right? Everybody should have a dog, and that's my idea, and I feel passionate about it, and that's what I'm writing about. But the teacher might have an on-demand prompt where she or he says, everybody's going to think of a time when, whatever, and they have to write to that specific topic. And our kids are trained, first of all, they need to be trained for MCAS readiness.
I know, that's what I was thinking. I wanted to say it.
There's, the literacy essay units are really, really strong and very exciting, and help our kids be able to respond to literature and find evidence in the text. It's very, one of the nice things about the program is it's very standards-based. So we talk a lot with the teachers, Lisa and I do, about how we don't have to do test prep anymore, because good instruction is test prep. And so the program is getting that ready for those.
That's why I wanted to make sure it was built in. I was curious if it was built in.
It's a good question.
That's great. Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. And thank you to everybody for coming. As Linda mentioned, our admin team has been in a workshop from eight to four today, and then they're back here tonight, so they need to be excused so they can get ready for the week. But thank you very much. Before you go, do you want to vote to accept the Freeman Kennedy and the HOD School Plan?
Just leave them hanging.
I did, I'm sorry.
We'll tell you how it turns out. All right, so do we have a motion to accept both the HOD and Freeman School Improvement Plans as presented?
I'll make a motion to accept both the Freeman Kennedy and HOD School Improvement Plan as presented tonight. Great job.
Second.
Any further comment beyond the great job? All right, seeing none, all favor?
Aye.
Thank you very much. Appreciate your efforts.
Have a great school year.
Good luck.
I'm going to jump into our portion of the evening. So the first thing that you had under the superintendent report was the Family Handbook. So the Family Handbook is published annually, every year we update it. There aren't a lot of changes in this year's handbook from last year. There's updated content in terms of contact information. All of the policies that we changed or revised or updated over the course of the last year, they've been replaced, so that the current policies are in the handbook. And one other section that will pen the next vote, we've updated the disciplinary procedures to refer to New Code of Conduct that we're going to be discussing next. Other than that, there are no changes to the Family Handbook. If you'd like, we can do the Code of Conduct next, and then you can vote to accept both together.
Because the handbook has the to-be-voted-on code of conduct.
Right.
All right, yeah, so.
But any questions about the, other than that, there are no changes. Any questions about the Family Handbook beyond?
No.
Okay. So let's jump into the Code of Conduct. So last year, our district team spent a lot of time talking about the district Code of Conduct. We really haven't had a comprehensive Code of Conduct before. We had a statement in the Family Handbook that was a rights and responsibilities statement and disciplinary rules and procedures. It's a two-page statement, that's all that was there. So it sort of talks about students' rights to feel safe in school, and it had some outlines of expectations and consequences, and it was really pretty open-ended. The other place that we had some disciplinary information was at the end of the bullying policy, and there are clear consequences outlined for bullying-type behavior. But we didn't have anything comprehensive or systematic. We spent a lot of time researching this, and basically, we ended up using a model or a framework for revising school codes of conduct that was published by the American Association for School Administrators, the School Superintendent Association, and the Children's Defense Fund. They did a comprehensive study, they looked at model programs from all over, and they came up with principles of what a strong Code of Conduct should include. We really liked the framework and the model that they presented, because it has a much more positive, proactive approach. We're in the business of education, we're not in the business of punishment. When kids make choices or demonstrate behaviors that aren't successful, we want them to learn from that. We want them to build skills to manage situations differently in the future. Nothing that we had in our prior materials talked about any of the proactive programs we have. So the SEL programs that we have at all the buildings, the supports that we have, response to intervention, the NEST teams, which are the child studies teams that are available to help children be successful. So we wanted all of that included in this, as well as a philosophy statement for how we perceive and how we interpret behavior. So the New Code of Conduct has all of that. It also really outlines our district vision, our district mission, our goals, our beliefs about what school climate should look like, and then there are much more comprehensive rights and responsibilities statements. So what should every student be able to expect, and what rights do they have coming into the schools, and what corresponding responsibilities do they have? So we've outlined that for students, we've outlined the rights and responsibilities for parents, the rights and responsibilities of administrators, of district-level staff, so it's very clear what the expectations are. We've included in the We've included in the code of conduct information about our bullying programs and instruction about our social-emotional learning programs at both elementary schools. And then a philosophy statement about how discipline sometimes looks different when you're talking about pre-K to 12, young children that haven't necessarily developed impulse control. And it's, you know, we really don't suspend kids at that age level as a general rule unless there's an immediate safety concern. So there's a philosophy statement about that. Then what we did was really look at defining levels of behavior. Level-one behavior are kinds of small things that happen in the course of the day within the classroom, and most level-one behaviors are handled by the classroom teacher. They're not brought down to the office, they're not, and there's a range of responses depending on the circumstance. So you might have disruptive behavior, a child that is struggling with, you know, not calling out or interrupting other kids. Those are things that we expect classroom teachers to handle, and they're handled differently depending on the circumstance. So we're not going to say every time a child calls out, this is the consequence. If a child has difficulty with impulse control, then you might be using tools like reminders or visual cues or things like that. So behavior is communication, and there's a different intent behind it. So we define level-one behaviors, and we define the range of responses that you might see for those. Level-two behaviors are when classroom interventions have been put in place for a period of time and they're not effective, and you need to bring in, whether it's consult with a counselor or consult with other people in the building. So it's sort of a second tier, and there's a range of behaviors defined for that. Level-three is typically handled by administrative staff, can involve suspension or loss of privileges. And then level-four would be sort of long-term suspension for significant behaviors. Then what we've done is, based on the models that we had from several other districts, we've gone through all the types of behaviors that you might see in the school, and we've defined what level of response each behavior would have so that parents could say, all right, if I have a child that has a difficulty with minor disruptions on the bus, this is how it's going to be handled, and these are the range of responses that one might see for that behavior. There are some notes here, a lot of the, there are behavioral situations that can emerge in schools that are governed, our responses are governed by state law and regulation. So any kind of drug charge, things like that, require long-term suspension. So some of this is legally governed. We've outlined all of the different types of behaviors that might see, the different range of consequences that would be put in place for that. Again, all the behaviors came from model, from different model plans that we looked at. It's much more comprehensive. Oftentimes, when we have a situation that arises, parents, we will get calls, and parents will say, well, there's nowhere in your documentation that indicates that this would be a result of that behavior. So we've tried to be comprehensive. And for legal reasons, there are some things that are included in the code of conduct that we most likely won't see at the elementary level, but we have to have a defined response for that. So alcohol, sexual assault, things like that, we have to include in our plan because we have to have a clear response plan. We've also put in definitions because we know in education, we tend to use educational terms or jargon that may be not accessible to everyone.
That's never happened.
Acronyms also. So when we talk about if there's a consequence that might be a behavior intervention plan, there's a definition, so a parent can figure out, what does that mean for my child? So we tried to define all the terms that we use throughout the plan that might be unclear. And then we also included in our plan all of the relevant school committee policies that apply to student discipline, so the parents would actually have copies of the full policy. So I think the process that we used, we did the research, and we started the draft as an admin team. We put together the proposed levels of consequences. Then they went back to building-based, site-based teams. So at each building, the building principal has a site-based team that's, has a representative from every grade level, a specialist teacher, a paraprofessional staff member. They reviewed the plan, and then they brought it back to their grade-level teams for feedback. We got feedback from the grade-level teams as well. Once we made all of those changes, both principals shared the draft plans with their school council that also has parents' representatives. They reviewed the plan, gave us back feedback. We made those changes, defined things that weren't clear, and clarified things, so we went through that. We also incorporated feedback from the climate surveys that parents had some questions, and we made sure those things were clear and well-adressed in our plan. So this is the proposed code of conduct. Again, it's been reviewed by all of teaching staff, all of our related service providers had feedback and input, as well as the school councils. Any questions, comments, thoughts on it?
I have a question. For the level-three behavior, it says, "may be appropriate when the severity of a student's behavior requires the short-term removal of the student from the learning environment." Have you ever encountered a situation when the student refuses to leave and the class has to leave for safety?
No, absolutely.
So would you want to define that in it, to say, or when the...
Well, there's a difference there. So you're talking about an immediate response. So if we have a child that is having trouble self-regulating and is disruptive to the class, and we don't want to embarrass that child or have to involve a physical restraint, we might remove students. But that is sort of a teaching strategy in the moment. The code of conduct defines what the consequence for that behavior would be. So it's after the fact. So this code of conduct really talks about then what happens to that child, you know, what's the impact of that behavior. But yes, there are definitely times that, and teachers have a lot of training and experience in that, as to when it's best to remove other students, if students are having an argument or things like that. But the code of conduct is for the parents to know, this is what happened at school today.
For that particular child, okay.
Yeah.
Any other questions?
So this was a national...
It's based on...
Essentially, you got it from...
Yep, and I'm happy to share it with you. It's the American Association for School Administrators, School Superintendent's Association, and the Children's Defense Fund partnered to do research and to develop guidelines for districts who are looking to develop a comprehensive code of conduct. So that was the research that we used. And they give guidelines for what an effective plan should include, including the rights and responsibilities statements, descriptions of proactive teaching programs, levels of consequences, because again, there's, every behavior, there's context around. So to say, if somebody hits somebody, this is what's going to happen every time, you know, it could be accidental, there could be a trigger, there could, you know, so you have to, they recommend levels of consequences with a range of responses. So yes, that's, we use the national guidelines. And then we also use the Mass State general laws to make sure that we incorporate everything that's required for that.
Now, does Retham and Plainville have something similar?
I don't believe that either district, when we were looking, have flushed this out yet.
I said, no. I guess the question I was getting to was going with the one-district philosophy is we should all be roughly on this. I mean, we can't make them do it, I understand that.
Right.
I mean, have this, and then by the time they're flowing into the King Philip portion of their lives, and...
King Philip has a more comprehensive code of conduct than the elementary district does. And most of our responses do align very well, because again, a lot of it's governed by regulation. But the model that we use was also for districts that are K-12 districts, and we looked for that kind of alignment. I do think that many of the other districts are probably going to start to revise and expand their code of conduct, and I have shared all of the information in what we've done with the other districts so that they can have it.
Okay. All right, so then, so we have two votes then, Penix. We'll need first a motion to accept the code of conduct, presuming that is then accepted, we would move on to accept the Family Handbook, which will require the approval of the code of conduct. Don't make me repeat that, I don't think I can do that. So do we have a motion to accept the code of conduct?
It's all moved.
Okay. Second?
Second.
Any further discussion on that? All in favor?
Aye.
And then do we have a motion to accept the Family Handbook?
Make a motion to accept the Family Handbook as presented?
Second?
Second.
Any further discussion?
No.
Okay, none, all in favor?
Aye.
I will do a quick school readiness opening report. So it has been a really busy summer across the district, as you're probably aware. We've had a lot of curriculum work going on, we've also had a lot of professional development that we've hosted, the Leadership Institute that the principals referred to today. We've had several other presenters come in, we've hosted workshops that have been open to all four districts. And then throughout most of July and August, we also had summer programs for the rec department going on at the Freeman Kennedy School, as well as our own summer school programs. At this time, all of our classroom teaching positions have been filled. We did have a few late summer resignations, which happens every summer. We have an opening now for a .5 developmental math specialist. We have a math specialist that took a full-time position in another district. We do have a candidate that we've recommended for that position, and we're in the process of finalizing that hire. We are also looking for a, we just recently filled a long-term subposition for a teacher maternity leave for the fall. We do have a couple of paraprofessionals that had late summer resignations, we've been interviewing and are confident that we'll be filling those positions in the next few days. We have a .5 school psychology position that is still open, we also have a candidate that we are negotiating with for that position. At the H.O.D. Day School, the building's been thoroughly cleaned, it's ready, will be ready to open in a couple of days. The roof replacement project is in its final stages. We've also replaced sinks and countertops in seven classrooms. We've installed new security cameras throughout the building, and we've updated, installed new smartboards in all seven second-grade classrooms. And that was part of our scheduled replacement program. Freeman Kennedy Summer Programming ran through the months of July and the beginning of August. Building's again mostly clean and ready. We have some hallways and things that are still being waxed. The cafeteria is drying, which is why I had to come around the other way tonight. The gym floor was refinished in-house this week. And as you know, it's probably coming in, landscape work all around the exterior of the building was also completed. The tech team has worked hard, they've installed new smartboards, they helped with the installation of new security cameras, they've also purchased and prepared all of our new tech equipment, repaired damaged equipment, set up accounts for students. So I think we're really in good shape as far as the tech for opening. We did have our administrative team participate in that four-day course on cultural proficiency and equity in education. We had full administrative teams from Plainville, Retham, and KP. It was really a great learning opportunity, and I think it really strengthened, as we talked about, the regional partnership. And we have been really working hard at developing a more comprehensive vision for pre-K to 12 education, and trying to align our programs and practices. So that was really powerful. We have enrolled several new students this summer. We've enrolled 15 new students for the Freeman Kennedy. That's the same as last year, so that pattern seems to be holding. Last time I checked, we had enrolled over 11 new students to the H.O.D., so over 25 for the district, 26 for the district, which is similar to last year. Opening day for staff is scheduled for Tuesday, August 27th. We do have a professional development day prior, that's part of the new contract, so staff is coming for PD on Monday. They'll be receiving training on the new social-emotional learning programs. Then opening day with all staff, which will include all of our paraprofessional staff, is scheduled for Tuesday. It starts at 8:00 at the H.O.D. Day School, so all committee members are welcome to attend and join that if you would like to. Other than that, we're really in good shape, and we'll be ready to open next week.
So I do have a quick question.
Yes.
About the, so the 15 new ads at Freeman and 11 at H.O.D., were there children that left the district? Like, what's the net?
I would have to get the number, but we do have students that leave and move. We have had several. So the trends are similar to what we had last year in terms of our overall enrollment.
Slowly increasing.
Yep. Slowly increasing. We had fewer students definitely leave than came.
Yeah.
So that...
So we have a gain, it just may not be a full 26.
Yeah, it's not a full gain of 26. But I can get that information as to what the difference in total enrollment is at the next meeting.
Not super, but thank you.
Yeah, yeah, great. All right, so we'll move on to the facilities update. So as Thomas talked about earlier, the roof is at this point about 96% complete. That's the stat we had this evening. There is still some sheet metal work that needs to be completed, wrapping the cupolas, some gutter work and things like that that are still remaining. In addition to that, there will be a punch list. There was some carpets that were damaged because they had interior equipment to do the structural reinforcement in the addition. There was some carpet damage, there was some tile damage, ceiling tile damage, and there were some doors that were, you know, knocked up and banged up. We also had some exterior damage to sidewalks and curbing. The Greenwood Industries, the contractor, will be making all of those repairs. We have to give them the punch list, we want to wait until the full project's complete before we issue the punch list, and then they have 45 days to rectify the things that we list there. So that will be happening. The other thing I sent a note out to the committee about was that at the H.O.D. Day School, it's a 25-year-old building, so we have sinks and counters in many classrooms. They were original laminate with a lot of water, and the way kids wash their hands and things, they obviously, over time, have separated, there was water damage. So we have a plan for replacement. We replaced the seven worst sinks and countertops this summer. We did it with quartz that will be much more durable, and it looks much cleaner and neater. We also replaced the sinks and all the fixtures in those classrooms. Once that work was done, we had the assistant plumbing inspector, the plumbing inspector for the town came in to take a look at that. When the plumbing inspector was on-site, they noted that the hot water temperatures throughout the building were lower than they should be. So when Matt and the plumbing inspector traced that back, there was a failed pump in the boiler that is responsible, and I'm talking outside my field of expertise here, so Matt can correct me if I...
So far.
I'm trying. That's responsible for pumping that hot water and keeping that system at that appropriate temperature. So that has already been replaced so that the temperatures can remain higher. The plumbing inspector also wanted us to replace mixing valves in all of the bathrooms to ensure water temperatures remain.
Yes, Matt, the plumbing told me that provide hot water to all the fixtures, water temperature, all good. So far, the side of the building has to be increasing temperature-wise, which if we increase it, we have risks of scalding. So we have to temper it back down, so they're going to push that, add features to recover the whole temperature. And it was a re-circulate, a re-circulate line for the, so it was constantly circulating hot water to the building, that's what we have discovered. More work.
So the concern was, if the hot water doesn't remain at the higher temperatures, then you could be at risk for waterborne illness. There is an increase of Legionnaires and other things across the country, so we want to make sure that we have that temperature high. Again, the pump's already been addressed, so we're working on getting those temperatures up. We are in the process of replacing the mixing valves at all of the bathroom sinks. We expect that work will be complete before we open. It is an unbudgeted cost. Matt, we don't have a rough estimate, about $5,000, $6,000?
No. Presently, about $7,000 in parts, and I'm anticipating about $9,000 in labor at this point.
Okay. So, but we have to do it. We want to make sure that the system's safe and that, you know, that we don't have any vulnerability in terms of that, so...
And the plumbing inspector will come back and check it out once it's all done?
Yes, we have.
Okay, so he'll make the final call, that it's all clear, all good. That sounds great. And no chance of scalding? I'm sorry, I know we set our water heater at a certain temperature, so you can't, I just don't want to see like a little kid get scalded.
That's why we're putting those valves in.
It's not like a house where you shower.
Yeah, yeah.
So in order to get hot water everywhere, you have to keep lots going to the lines.
Yeah.
You have to increase it, leaving the source. So by doing that, you do a potential, first of all, so what the plumbing inspector has required us to do is install a mixing valve at each sink.
Okay.
So we're starting out with the bathrooms, because there's about 85 sinks in the entire building.
Okay.
Bathrooms are required to have hot water, if the classrooms are not.
Yep.
So we're doing this, we're installing an anti, we're installing a mixing valve, which will take the hotter water, makes it the cooler water, and give it predetermined.
I learned something new, all right, great.
So you adjust it based on its distance, so it regulates less...
There's many different options. We're going with one that we, instead of the, and right guy, in compensating whether the temperature goes up a couple degrees, goes down a couple degrees, it'll know, some of them you can set it, and if anything ever changes, it'll know, so you have to do maintenance, so we're doing it so it's automatically.
Right.
They're not going to get a direct shot of hot water, it's going to be mixed in.
Right.
Okay, all right.
To a predetermined temperature.
Got it.
But that's what's driving the cost effectively. But that's what's driving the cost effectively.
Okay.
We're installing a mixing valve.
Okay.
And not only is the mixing valve, if we install all the lines, you can go with mixing valve, and it's also a 26-year-old building.
Yep.
So when you start taking apart old stuff...
Stuff falls apart.
...we find that some of the valves are no longer usable. So that's what's slowing it down. As of right now, we have 46 bathroom sinks that are required to have hot water and we're at 34, so. So we, it's based on, all the bathrooms will be finished tomorrow, provided we don't have any major catastrophes, but when we start touching, and then what we're going to do is take away at the classrooms, right now, I can shut off the hot water.
To the classrooms.
Where they have cold water.
Yeah.
It's not a code requirement on that, so we're gonna deal with the immediate concern and then move forward.
That's great.
Six, so the total of 16,000, you guesstimated, I understand that's not a final figure, that would be inclusive of the bathroom and classrooms?
That's the anticipated amount.
Okay, so we could, as you mentioned, with the classrooms, you kind of spread that out a little bit, so it's not like we're taking a $16,000 hit immediately, we can kind of...
Well, in order to get the power to purchase, I had a negotiation on getting...
I don't doubt that.
...and I'm specially made. So I'm buying the full allotment of mixing valve and all the, when you start buying massive quantities, when I'm buying 300 of those...
Try to get discount.
You're getting huge discounts, so I would like to, because it would also, it's gonna, sure, cause complaints with teachers and children if they're, if they have material on their hands, they want to wash their hands in this bathroom, and the bathroom is not any cold. So it would be good to...
Bracing.
...as fast as possible.
But we are starting, because we're so close to opening, we're starting with all the required sinks.
Right, right.
And then we can spread the labor, yeah.
So we've spent the 7,000 on the parts.
Right.
It's just the labor can be kind of...
Yes, that's...
...hurling out across the...
Today, they were, I assigned one of my guys to work with the plumber to pre-fit stuff, because he's not legally licensed to touch plumbing, so he can get the hoses connected to the new stuff and then, or I have to do it.
Plumber has to walk in a room and then we're all set? Okay.
Well, but when they start taking apart the old lines and the valves are going everywhere, that's where...
Grandfather's a plumber, I'm allowed to say that.
...which is slowing it down. So if we don't run into any major catastrophe, it shouldn't...
We fully appreciate the expertise of all the plumbers who will be working...
My grandfather's a plumber, I'm allowed to say that.
By the way.
Is that something that we would have to do with here, or what would prevent the same issue from arising here?
This building was built differently, it was built with a newer code, where the H.O.D. was put in and it was built fine.
Sure.
I can't...
We're being proactive.
Yes, we're being proactive and we can't, we're, which been grandfather, he's had to the plumbing, he forget it, we're about the same to have inspection and that's what caused it, so, but there have been seven sinks that had to be upgraded since today's code, so then that wouldn't work because they need hotter temperature to go back down. So...
I mean, at some point, we were doing this, so that's...
Right.
And now that we know there's a potential issue, we want to make sure that we address it. So we've moved forward and we'll have to adjust, we might have to do a budget transfer for an expected cost.
I think all things considered, for the amount of fixtures you're talking about, that's a relatively small cost. Parts and labor altogether, that's remarkably inexpensive, so...
Well, that was, I've been able to break against really contractors that...
Oh, I know you did.
I, you know, I want to buy the parts, I want to, I want to use our equipment, we're either using a state equipment, because they can't get it and I don't want to be marketed on it, so I've been able to find multiple contractors I use, I provide that way to just one other process thing and then just do a T&amp;M. And then I've also found that I have a licensed HVAC guy that's very handy, so he's a good helper, so I'm paying him and he can assist them. So the people I've been using, unless it's large scale, I'm able to, oh, get a reachable price and assist them so they don't have to bring all the people...
Yes, so we've been able to cut some of the labor costs and we've been able to cut some of the supply costs.
Trying to add a bit of that.
So, thank you.
I would have to say, I think Matt's done a great job of being right on top of this and moving forward. I mean, the issue only came up, I think you called me, Thursday last week, and we're already addressed almost all of it, so...
I fully anticipated it to be more expensive, so...
Yeah. We did too, at first.
Mostly maybe happens, I don't see a point.
Okay, yeah, that's great.
Awesome.
Any questions for Matt, or...
Oh, it's great.
Great.
Thank you.
Thank you, Matt.
Thanks. Matt also needs to go home. A long day. The next item is annually, we're required to review our Boleen policy. I'd like to suggest that we table that until the October meeting because the policy, or September meeting, the policy subcommittee did not have the opportunity to meet tonight before tonight's meeting to make recommendations because of the walkthrough. So if that's okay, we'll move that to September.
Mm-hmm.
Next in your packet is just for your information, the facilities rental, we are required by policy to provide that report annually. And, let me just see, that's Exhibit 6, so you can see that, yep, the total cost, and you can see the different groups that rented. I think I have...
How's that compared to previous years?
Oh, I'm sorry, I have eight copies of the report, so it's just, we brought in You can see Norfolk Lions soccer and the Girl Scout organizations were significant renters, but the details on the back of all the other groups that have rented and the invoices and paid.
Is that materially more or less than previous?
It's up from previous years, but not significantly, I would say, from last year. It's up quite a bit from a few years ago.
It's not going to help offset some of these previous costs?
Not necessarily.
Alright.
Then the last thing is just a reminder that the Mass Association of School Committees and Mass Association of School Superintendents hosts their Fall Conference. The conference this year is November 6 through 9. In the past, the committee has people who are interested, some have split days and attended different days. So the conference schedule and the guest speakers are in your packet for people to take a look at. If anyone is interested in attending for a day or for all of the conference, if you email Pam, we can get everybody registered and move forward from that.
It's being held in Aruba, is that right?
Almost, a hiatus in November. No, it's a hiatus.
Any retreat will be held in the Aruba Room.
And that's all I had.
Alright, moving on to committee reports, which I don't know if we, is King Philip, I don't know what their thing is...
They did have a retreat on Tuesday, July 26th, which I was not able to attend.
Is that in Aruba?
That was not in Aruba. I believe that was at the middle school, I believe. And then their walkthrough is at some point next week. I'm not sure I'll make that, but I will make the first meeting on September 3rd, so...
Okay. Let's hit for that then, aren't we?
Yeah, and I don't think we have anything for policy sub either, at this point.
Just the third reading of the policy we read on student fundraising activities from the July.
So we need to vote on that?
Yeah, it's a vote.
Okay. Alright, so then we need to get a motion for approving policy JJE student fundraising activities. Do you motion on that?
I'll make a motion to approve the JJE policy for student fundraising activities, as written.
Second?
Second.
Any discussion on this? Off memory, I don't think there's really...
There were no changes from either of the first two.
Okay. I'm just making sure I've remembered that correctly. Should be no further discussion, all in favor?
Aye.
Okay. Alright, so we have a couple renewals. Norfolk Lions, let's get to that page, is, has filed an application to renew their partner status.
Norfolk Cable.
Thank you. And then we also have a partner renewal application for Norfolk Cable. Example A.
Dr. Alardi, I have a question.
Yeah.
And I love NCTV, they're doing a remarkable job. My question would be privacy with students, is that something that, I know we talked about in the spring was brought up?
We've addressed that. We've worked really closely with Norfolk Cable, and we have moved forward with a practice that any videotaping that Norfolk Cable does of any student events, we are not using students' full names, so it's first name only and grade level. The only exception to that was sixth grade graduation, where we asked parents for consent. And if anybody did not want their child's full name used, they had the option of opting out of that.
And they understand that?